Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to our Municipal District Board of Lateshine Regular Meeting. I'd like to call it to order. We need the, we're going to go to number two, adoption of the agenda. Mr. Hogan?
Thank you, Mr. Reeve, Members of Council. Administration does have one addition to the agenda that would go on, I would suggest, 7.4.4, and it would be the 2021 Strategic Planning Sessions Change of Venue. And the reason that's emergent is Strategic Planning is coming up. We had originally planned to be in Edmonton, some change of direction, and we need to be making new arrangements for the venue, so that's why it's an emergent issue.
Thank you. You need a motion to, yeah.
Just a motion to adopt the agenda as amended.
I'll make the motion to adopt the agenda as amended.
Thank you, Counselor Fedeah, for making that motion. Any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Carrie, thank you. Adoption of the minutes.
In the package, Mr. Reeve, Members of Council, you have the minutes of the September 22nd, 2021 meeting. Just a motion to adopt those minutes as accurate.
The motion, Mr. Reeve, to adopt the minutes.
Thank you, Counselor Crick, for that motion. Any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Carrie, thank you. Okay, I guess we're going to public hearing? No?
Not public hearing, just the delegation.
Delegation? Okay, sorry, delegation, yes. That's for Stantec? Morning.
Good morning.
Sorry, we're running behind.
That's okay. Can I proceed? Okay. Just waiting for the presentation.
You can wait, they've been waiting for me all morning.
So, good morning, Mr. Reeve and Members of Council. My name is Sylvia Summers. I'm a Senior Planner with Stantec Consulting. Stantec was retained to prepare the Lakori Major Area Structure Plan. So I'm here to present an overview of the Lakori MASP, its contents and process, and respond to any questions that council may have regarding the MASP. Next slide, please. So, there's a hierarchy to these land use planning documents that you see, from broad intermunicipal development plans, IDPs, between municipalities that share a common boundary, municipal-wide plans, MDPs, that provide a framework for development on MD and on an MD-wide basis, to more specific plans for larger areas within the municipalities, MASP's, to very specific plans for smaller areas within the municipality, typically area structure plans, which are a quarter section typically in size. All of these are considered statutory documents and must be consistent with one another. In addition, every municipality must also pass a land use bylaw, which establishes development and building regulations for every parcel of land through land use districts or zoning. The land use bylaw is the tool that implements policies of an IDP, MDP, MASP's, or ASP's. The plan we're discussing today is a major area structure plan, MASP. Next slide, please. So, what does an MASP do? It identifies appropriate locations for these, those interested in developing, identifies a future development pattern consistent with anticipated growth, suitable municipal servicing, and maintaining environmental safeguards, provides landowners with some certainty regarding what development may be considered on their and neighboring lands, and provides council, MD council, and staff sound planning rationale when considering development proposals. Next slide, please. So, the MASP does not rezone the land or provide specific development regulations, lot layout, or internal road systems. That will occur at the ASP and redistricting zoning stages of approval. Next slide, please. So, why are we doing this MASP? The existing plan is old. So, since the current ASP was last updated in 1988, there have been changes within the MD and to provincial legislation that needs to be considered and applied relative to development within the hamlet. The MASP planning area is approximately one section of land with the center point being the intersections of Highway 55 and 41. So it's the red dash line that you see before you. Next slide, please. This project has been undertaken in four phases. The project was initiated in July 2020. We undertook a virtual engagement in November 2020 to receive feedback on the draft MASP. We also undertook in-person engagement in August to review feedback on the draft MASP as well. After considering the feedback from the open house, we finalized the plan. We are here presenting the Lakori MASP for consideration of first reading prior to moving forward to public hearing. Next slide, please. The MASP is divided into eight sections. The sections I'm going to focus on are Section 5, which details the future development concept, and Section 6, which contains the policies that guide future development within the specific policy areas. Next slide, please. The future development concept is shown here and divides the community up into six land use policy areas. Each of these policy areas has corresponding policy statements that guide and direct how land use decisions, types of development, should be considered in each of these areas. The policy areas I'm going to discuss are the residential policy area, shown in yellow, the Hamlet Main Street Commercial Policy Area, shown in red with hatching, the Hamlet Commercial Policy Area, shown in red, the Rural Industrial Policy Area, shown in purple, the Hamlet Urban Reserve Policy Area, shown in gray, the Public Use and Recreation Policy Area, shown in bright green. In addition, the MASP also contains policies related to environmental protection, policies of providing servicing, and policies regarding roads and transportation. The next slide, please. So, the general policies of the MASP are applicable to all policies areas. These include, but aren't limited to, future development is to be located as identified in the future land use development concept. Where the MASP does not address a policy, the policies and regulations of the MDP and land use bylaw will take precedence. Grazing and cropping will continue to be a permitted use within the MASP in the interim, and future development is encouraged to be contiguous with existing development. Next slide, please. So, when looking at existing, existing use policies, the adoption of the Lakori MASP does not change the current land use bylaw designation, the zoning, of the lands within the Hamlet boundary. Existing districts and corresponding regulations for that district remain in place. Only landowners can initiate redistricting, rezoning of their land. Next slide, please. The purpose of the residential policy area, shown in yellow, is to provide opportunities for residential uses consistent with the MD of Bonneville's Hamlet HR1 and Hamlet Multifamily Residential HR2 land use districts. The land use identified in the Hamlet Commercial, Hamlet Main Street Commercial Policy Area, shown in the red hatching, are intended to retain and support the development of retail and commercial services that cater to the local Hamlet population. The purpose of the Hamlet Main Street Commercial Policy Area is that although the underlying land use bylaw district may allow for other uses, the intent is to support and facilitate the development of typical Main Street commercial and local services of a scale within small-town rural Alberta. Next slide, please. The Hamlet Commercial Policy Area, shown in red, the purpose of this policy area is to provide opportunities for commercial light industrial uses, which are intended to primarily serve the traveling public. These are commercial and light industrial uses, which are not usually desired within the Main Street commercial area, and which benefit from exposure to high-traffic volumes or require straightforward access to major transportation routes. Policies within this policy area address buffers between incompatible uses, guides, guides for site development, and outdoor storage and screening, screening, to name a few. Next slide, please. The Rural Industrial Policy Area, shown in purple, addresses land uses that have been zoned to provide for a variety of industrial opportunities consistent with a rural industrial LUB district. Policies within this policy area address site design, which addresses compatible interface with adjacent development, buffers between incompatible uses, and nuisance mitigation evaluation at development permit for site-specific activities, including noise, dust, and road traffic. Next slide, please. The Hamlet Urban Reserve Policy Area, shown in gray, addresses land, addresses lands intended to remain in their current state for the foreseeable future. The intended future use of the land has not yet been determined. Long-term, well beyond the 20-year horizon of this MASP, the lands may be utilized for future Hamlet development. Until such time, the underlying land use bylaw district requirements of these lands prevail. The Public Use and Recreation Policy Area, shown in green, is intended for uses of public benefit and included Lakori Cemetery, Community Hall, and the open space located adjacent to 47th Street. Despite the underlying residential on Hamlet general zone, the intention of this policy area is solely for the development that is of public benefit, use and recreation. The future development concept does not propose or anticipate the need for additional lands for recreation and open space within the Hamlet boundary for the 20-year time horizon of this MASP. Next slide, please. Policies within this MASP ensure that landscapes with important environmental features are protected. As the area develops, preserving environmental qualities and aesthetics and improving the opportunities for outdoor recreation will be important to maintaining a high quality of life for Hamlet and area residents. Next slide, please. Section 610 of the policy framework outlines servicing requirements, and stormwater policy, policies address onsite and downstream stormwater management impacts of development and maintaining of pre-development rates. Stormwater management will be the responsibility of the developer. Next slide, please. Shallow utility policies note that shallow utilities are to be provided in keeping with municipal development standards, and roads and transportation policies note that proposed roads must be to the specifications of the MD, and the developer is responsible for the cost associated with the development of new roads to service the development and upgrading existing roads where required. Next slide, please. So that's just a brief overview of the Lakori MASP. I am available for any questions that you may have.
Okay.
Hi, thanks for your patience. So, in regards to the stormwater drainage, so we're looking at, you kind of have assessed it for 20 years, is that, or is that kind of roughly what I'm understanding, or?
So, the stormwater, as part of the MASP, we took a look at the stormwater drainage. There's mapping with regards to that desired development flows, but the fundamentals of the MASP, what it is requiring is that any development that takes place needs to be done so in a manner where the pre-stormwater drainage requirements and flows are maintained, so that any development that takes place doesn't impact adjacent lands with regards to water overflow and stormwater drainage onto other sites.
Right, okay, thanks. Yeah, there's, there's some rumors going around that there's going to be some potential big increases in, in, in development and things like that up in that area, so if that comes to fruition, we, we know there's going to be some, some serious challenges to that area, so.
And that's one of the things that the MASP at that level addresses, and then any future development with specific, within specific areas may require, at the discretion of the MD, an area structure plan at the quarter section level, which would then look in greater detail at any of those stormwater requirements, and may require more detailed studies with regards to drainage, to ensure that there's no adverse impacts on adjacent properties.
Okay, sounds good, thank you.
I think a lot of the stormwater that can end up on our quarter section that we own, I know that land quite well, and a lot of the water can run right to the quarter section that the MD has already, but there is a drainage system that goes through part of those quarters, as you've seen, so, yeah. Thanks for bringing that up. Any other questions, ladies and gentlemen?
Thank you for your time today.
Yeah, thank you for your time and your patience. Mr. Hogan?
Thank you, Mr. Reeve, Members of Council. I guess at this time, I'll turn the floor over to Ms. Esther Kimbough, General Manager of Planning and Community Services.
I'll make the motion to accept that as information.
Thank you, Counselor Fedeah, for making that motion. Any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor? You need to have a dart gun, yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Reeve, Members of Council. Today, Administration is presenting Council with a quarterly summary report for the months of July, August, and September 2021 from the Planning and Community Services Department. So, attached to this report, you'll find two appendices. In Appendix A, you will see the report from our Parks, Recreation, and Culture Department, as well in Appendix B, the report from Planning and Development. So at this time, I'll ask our Director of Parks, Recreation, and Culture, Woeen Clausen, to come up and go over his report with you, and then that'll be followed by Lisa Foliate, our Manager of Planning and Development, who will also come up and share her report.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Morning, Mr. Reeve and Council.
Morning.
So this is kind of a list of all the, the projects and where they're at as of a couple weeks ago when this, this report was done, so you can kind of get an idea of the progress of, of a lot of these and where they're at. Is there any questions on, on any specifics, or is there any?
Just in regards to the, that's very personal on the list, or the trail package or project. Do you want to just explain what project that is?
Yes, through the REVE. The trail project is a project where council had selected a number of trails that they'd like to see done, and they put a million dollars towards that project. So there was, from that, there was three kind of areas identified in which we would target. There's several trails outlined to, to look at throughout the, the entire MD, so we had to narrow it down, and three, three of those areas were selected. The three areas were Moose Lake, Fort Kent, and Cherry Grove, and where they kind of would reach the most residents along different routes or connect communities in those, those areas. The idea with, with this and the funds were to look at how, how much we could do with the, the million dollars there, and so it was suggested that we look at doing these at a natural or semi-developed trail as opposed to fully paved, because then that, that adds an additional cost there. Currently, these have all been designed, and they have then since been sent off for approvals to the province, and they're, they're waiting for the environmental approvals, transportation approvals, and some we're finding we, we now have to do First Nations, First Nations consultation on as well. So they're kind of in limbo right now with, until those approvals are done. Once they, they come through, then we'll be tendering out those and going from, from there with what those tenders come back with for numbers and, and whatnot.
Thank you.
Yeah, you mentioned the two, the two services, but I hope that the paved services tendered out as well, ready for an option.
Yes, through the REVE. That, that was also, will be added in with a tender to just get a, a pricing of what, what it would take additionally to, if we went the full, full route, so that council has that information, should they choose to, to go that route or for future consideration. We have something there.
Yes.
Thank you. In regards to the, to the trail project, I have some concerns, some, some resonance about the, the MR and road allowances going through, and my understanding was that there's going to be some consultation or they're going to get notified to, to this. The people that I've been talking to did not get notified to what was going to happen, so just wondering if there's a report that you could give us about that, and, and who you talk to or who the engineering company, not you in particular, but you in general as far as the, you know, like the company goes, and just to see that they, they make sense, because right now, that's not making sense.
Through the REVE, to Counselor Fedeah's question, the trails were selected and, and approved through council, and then those were put out through social media on our website. They were carried in the newspaper as to the rough areas which they were going. The locations which they were selected were looking for our properties that the MD owned, so our right-ofways, ERs and MRs, and noting that some may have caused or could cause potential issues, they, they were then going to come back when all approvals and stuff were done for final approval from council, because at that time, we would also know how much it's going to cost to do the trails as well. There may be rejection on some of the approvals, so that would cause us to modify those, those trails as well. But we, we have taken into consideration locals and the public's concerns that we have heard from, and those will be put into the, the final before they come back, so.
Yeah, to second, Counselor Fedeah, I had a lot of calls from the Cherry Grove area, I believe that's what you're talking, and nobody's been, she says, sorry, I'll redo that. She says a lot of people that's along that trail were notified, and I don't know the procedure for sure, but I think people need to be notified, and then she also thought she owned the land, and there's kind of a sticky situation where the land, the guy that owned the land before said, yeah, you own this whole section, and then turns out that there's a road allowance going right through it, and you don't own it, so that's probably part of the problem, so, yeah.
Ah, yes, through the REVE, that's, that's, yeah.
Thank you, yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, there was some misinformation on that, but also as a, as a homeowner, it's, it's, you should do the homework as well, correct?
Yes, yes.
So, but yeah, that is the same, the same one, yeah.
Same, yeah, and, and I don't know, I just hear what the taxpayer is over the phone, right? So, all right, thank you. Any other questions for Mr. Reeve? Yes.
Mr. Reeve and Members of Council, part of the issue that we run into is that council picked the map for these trails. I'll suggest that in the future that council pick an area and then send Parks and Recreation or Administration, I guess, out to do the public engagement before we finalize any particular trail system, because Parks was put in a position where they had a, they had a defined map, they were going to build trails, and we, I think in this case, the cart passed the horse, so to speak, and I would think in the future, it would be best if we had a general idea where we wanted trails, then we go out and do the public engagement, then we come back and start actually creating the map and the tenders, et cetera, et cetera, with information already from the public. I think right now, I think we're, I think there's the, the step three happened before step two in this case, and I think our process in the future could be refined a little bit.
Yeah, thank you, Al, for that. Yes?
Yeah, I'll just add that if it's going to be a problem building pass in Cherry Grove, we got lots of room around Moose Lake, and those were led by petitions by all the neighbors, so we got lots of support over there, just saying.
Okay, thank you for that. Your reports, okay, well, thank you. Appreciate your time.
Thank you, Mr. Reeve and Council.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I'm here today to give you the building and the Planning and Development Quarterly Report for July, August, and September of 2021. So we did have 43 building permits that were issued in the third quarter for just over a value of 5.5 million. Year-to-date building permits for 2021, there's 130 permits with just over 15.4 million, so we're on track to pretty much do the same that we did last year in 2020. Our housing starts in the third, in the third quarter were 27, or housing starts were 11 in the third quarter, so altogether, there's 27, so 20 single-family dwellings this year, two RTMs, and five mobile homes. Safety codes permits, we had 165 new permits issued in the third quarter with a year-to-date of 386, most of them for the MD of Bonneville, we did have a couple for both the Summer Villages. Three new subdivision applications with a year-to-date of 17, and non-compliances, there were five new non-compliances received in the third quarter, and six have been resolved, so the total outstanding non-compliances are down from the second quarter from 58 to 57.
Thank, thank you.
Any questions?
Any questions, yeah? Counselor Fedeah?
Do you think this is the bottom, the bottom of the bottom? Are we, how is the activity out there? Is it, is it seem like we have lots in our hopper, or are things kind of moving forward?
I think we're just the same as last year, so I'm hoping it's going to go up for the next year. I don't think the price of lumber or anything happened, helped this year as well. We're pretty consistent with last year's numbers to this year's numbers.
Thank you.
And Mr. Reeve? Yes.
Mr. Reeve, Members of Council, I think, I look at these numbers a little bit differently than maybe other departments do. I look at building permits as a, a sense of our economic indicators, and if you look at the previous years, you'll see in 2006, we were 47 million, and you can see a very significant drop-off in 2015, 2016, which kind of mirrors where our assessment's been going. I'm actually quite hopeful that if we look at what we did in 2020, which was about 16 and a half million were the building permits, and we're on track to be the same as 2020, that I think, and I don't know, you know, there will have to be more economic indicators that will come forward over the next couple of months, but I would suggest that this probably means that we've, we've probably stabilized. Not necessarily happy stabilizing at 15, 16 million dollars, but it means that I don't think it's going to go much lower, and there's only, there's only room for it to go up. I think there's some economic issues at play right now. Obviously, the, the supply chain has become an issue, I think everybody's familiar with that. Oil is back up to $85, $86 a barrel this morning, heavy crudes in that 65 range today. So I think these numbers tell us that we're kind of bottomed out, and I think we need to start preparing for those increases. I don't think we're, I, I don't see a day where we're going to hit back to where we were in 2013 with 117 million, but, but I think we are slowly stabilizing, and I think the future is actually quite bright in terms of our development activity.
Thank you, Al. Any other questions? Thank you, Lisa.
Thank you very much.
So, that Mr. Reeve, Administration would like to request a motion to accept our recorded information.
Thank you.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Counselor Crick, for making that motion. Any discussion on that? Seeing none, all those in favor? Carrie, thank you.
My second item for you today is bylaw number 1782, the Lakori Major Area Structure Plan Bylaw. Administration, as we said earlier, has been working on a review and update of the Lakori Major Area Structure Plan to ensure the plan is consistent with our current practices, our municipal policies, as well as our aspirations into the future. The review and update of the master plan, master, sorry, major area structure plan was initiated in July of 2019. Data was compiled, and the draft plan was completed for citizen engagement. Citizen engagement occurred as follows. November 10th, 2020, we had an in-person open house, which was scheduled but canceled due to COVID. November later on, we did, we did all the virtual public engagement, presentation, and survey. later on, um, did, we did hold a virtual public engagement presentation and survey. In August of this past year, we were able to try and hold an in-person open house, which was still in progress. Today, we'd like to request first reading of the bylaw. If approved, then administration would also like to schedule the required public hearing for December 8th, regular meeting.
Thank you.
So attached for council's information is the draft bylaw, so by law number 1782, as well as the actual major area structure plan document.
Okay. Thank you. Counsel Faddeev?
I'd like to make the motion to, uh, do first reading.
Okay. Counsel Faddeev makes the motion. Any discussion on that? Seeing none. All those in favor? Carrie? Need another one?
Yes, please. Uh, second, recommended action is the council's December 8th, 2021 at 10:00 AM as the date of the Lakori Major Area Structure Plan bylaw.
Okay. I'd like to make that motion. Any discussion on that motion? Seeing none. All those in favor? Carrie, thank you. Can I do that? Thank you.
Next on the docket, uh, Mr. Reeve and counsel is, uh, um, the General Manager of Corporate Services with the, uh, 2021 third quarter, uh, financial report and, uh, financial summary.
Morning. You have two minutes. No.
Sorry, I'll start again. In council's package is the quarterly corporate services and financial update for the period ended, the quarter ended September 30th, 2021. Can I please ask for appendix A to be brought up? Appendix A, thank you. So in appen- appendix A contains the corporate services report looking after department, included in the department's administration, finance, human resources and information technology. Does, can council have any questions on that? Just the reports from the department. It has the payments made. Yes, sir.
Counsel Faddeev?
In regards to, uh, Sun Life, has there been any issues, uh, with some of the coverage? Any feedback from the staff to good, bad or other?
Through the reef to Counsel Faddeev, we've received, um, very good comments actually compared to our previous, um, benefits provider. Um, Sun Life, we've worked, we've been, the MD did actually have Sun Life prior to going to Mania Life. And we completed a request, um, our RFP, request for proposals in 2019, just when hired started and requested, um, from, just to the market as a whole, which was based, posted on, um, APC and Sun Life was selected. We've not had any issues internally with staff. We've not gotten any negative, um, feedback. And if staff have any concerns to our human resource department, we can actually contact them directly. Um, so they're able to look directly into cases of concern. And if there's any, we, we can certainly address them.
Thanks. Cause I know we changed and I just wanted to see if that was going well and, and all that stuff. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions on that? Nope. Continue. Thank you.
Okay. I'll now go into the financial reports aspect, which is appendix B, please.
Do you have a comment, Mr. Reeve?
Yes.
Like on the report, it says penalty to be applied October 15th. It should've been October 16th, right? Because you can pay up to the 15th.
Through the reef to Counsel Kreviak, the penalty will be, uh, applied after. It should read after October 15th, which is the 16th.
Yeah. It should be after. Yeah.
Yeah. We did, I can confirm that we did not apply penalties on October 15th, 2021.
Thank you.
Okay. My apologies for that error. Um,
It's okay.
The statement of operating surplus or deficit compares the operating revenues and expenditures to the budget. As of September 30th, total revenues were 106 million and total expenditures were 47.5 million. These expenditures represent 57.5% of the budgeted operating expenditures. I must note that you will see a variance in, um, general municipal revenues, which appears as though we collected 19 million dollars more. That is for, um, word six note. So at the time of budget, the, what used to be called the code lake air weapons range wasn't yet in our municipality, but we got the order in council, um, later that year. So those funds were actually calculated now, but needs to be distributed to our neighbors, um, at this time now that we've collected, um, our taxes. Um, the statement of capital expenditures, funding and reserves compares capital expenditures to date with the capital budget. Capital expenditures to date total 4.6 million with several, several capital projects still in progress. We tend to see the expenditures on capital projects come in the last quarter of the year. So between October and December is when we have a lot of the disbursements on capital projects that were completed earlier in the season. The MD is still in a net asset position. A net asset position just means that we have assets that exceed our liabilities. So if, um, all was to hand, um, we can pay all our debt. That's pretty much what the, um, net asset statement, um, um, explains. During the council orientations, council had asked, um, a few questions about some of the departments. Um, but, so in the statement of surplus and deficit, what we do look for is when we're already in the third quarter, we're watching to see that expenditures don't exceed 75% because we still have a quarter of the year to go through. Ex- with the exception of requisitions. So an example of a requisition would be a requisition from the library board. We don't get them quarterly. We pay them out as we get them. So you'd expect something like that to be at 100%. The C2, we pay those quarterly. So you'd, I expect that those expenditures are no more than 75% as we hand the third quarter. And we, we have no concerns. There are no departments that exceed, um, that are of concern at the end of the third quarter.
For, uh, uh, council through the reef, this is a quick, uh, way I do when I'm looking at the financial statements when they come over my desk. Is that column on the right the percentage variance? That is, I just go, are we in June? So in June, that should mean to me that the vast majority of our department should run anywhere between 40 and a 60% variance. If they're at a 90% variance, then I need to check over what that column is. And for example, as, as a general manager has indicated, um, if we get the, the tax requisition that we pay, that will be already be at 100%. So I just check and see what that is. If I see parks, for example, at a 92% in April, I'm going, whoa, 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 what, what's going on here? Now that could be on the operating side, that there could be reasons for that, but that's usually the trigger. So when you see these, um, these financial statements, that's the first thing I look at is that column on the right is to determine where are we at in terms of the percentage compared to where we at on the calendar. 50%, June 1st, we should be 50%. October 1st, we should be 75%. December 31st, we should be 100%. That's, so that's, that's just a very quick, uh, way of scanning a financial report to see where everything is.
Thank you.
Some other pieces of information in your package is the cash position. Jolene, can you please scroll down? It's just a summary of what, what we had in the bank. Keep going. Page 93 it says on here. Keep going. There you have it. So this is just a summary of what our cash position was at the, as at September 30th. It's constantly changing. Uh, um, we've since collected more fun, revenue here, um, because our taxation deadline this year was, um, October 15th. Um, everyone had a chance to still pay. You see that we still have some short-term investments in the ATB bank. We have a long-term investment still with CIBC, with Gandhi. Um, and we have the funds that are in our operating bank account. We will be going out shortly, um, to send our request for rates to see what the best rate is that we can invest our funds, um, short-term, just to get in some interest income.
Uh, Tulu, if I may, uh, through the reef, uh, to, uh, especially for the, uh, for, um, there's some of the new councils. One of the balancing acts that the, uh, corporate services that, uh, um, that the general manager has to do is making sure there's enough cash flow on hand to pay the bills. On the other hand, not having all your money in a non-interest bearing account. So your money's just sitting there doing absolutely nothing. So it's a constant balancing act. Um, and we also are very, very picky about where money goes because we're very low risk tolerant investors. But it's also, you'll see on the one column, we've got 30, 90, 60, other 90-day, um, investments. So we're always kinda looking at where our cash flow is compared to, do we have too much just sitting in a non-interest bearing account? Should we put some in an account that'll pay a couple of percentage points? Um, cause that's all, that, that money can earn money and that's, that comes back in the municipality. So that's one of the balancing acts that, uh, if we find out one day that we're in a cash crunch, that's because we did not put our, we, we, we either kept money or put too much money in the accounts. If we find that we got a whole bunch of money sitting doing nothing in our non-interest bearing account, in our, basically our checking account, that means that we weren't, um, we weren't managing our investment accounts, uh, appropriately. Uh, you can, uh, we can, we can create quite a bit of revenue or we can, uh, we can not create quite a bit of revenue depending if that balancing act hasn't been managed properly. And, uh, I can tell you right now, I think Tulu's managing it properly.
Thank you, Hal. And to add to what, um, um, the CEO just said, last year we did not invest our funds because we got a better return on just having a, in our checking account than the banks could offer us, um, at the, after the request for rates. And finally, we also at every quarter present to you the state of our budget. So there's a, uh, yes, please keep scrolling down. Thank you, Jolene. Thank you. Um, we provide a, a listing of the unbudgeted expenditures report. This is just a summary of where we started when budget was approved at the pri- in the previous year to where we had to date. Our budget was approved at 150,022,3,069. And then we have all the council motions and what they were for to fund expenditures during the year. A total budget as at September 30th and actually as of today as well is 153,373,050. Any questions for me?
Any other questions, gentlemen? No. Seeing none. Thank you.
If none, I would ask that, um, uh, the council accepts the September 30th, 2021 corporate services quarterly update as information. And furthermore, that council approves the September 30th, 2021 quarterly financial report as presented.
Anybody wanna make that motion? Okay. Okay. Thank you, Counsel Slupchik, for making that motion. Any discussion on this motion? Seeing none. All those in favor? Carrie, thank you. Thank you, Tulu.
Thank you. Next item I have for council is the 2022 municipal budget public consultation locations. So at the September 2020, 22, 2021 regular meeting of council, council approved the 2022 municipal budget timeline, which included scheduling four public consultation sessions at locations to be determined at a later date after the election was completed. Council, council held open houses to discuss the 2021 municipal budget in Cherry Grove. One was held here in council chambers virtually and one was held in Flat Lake. Administration is requesting that council provide ga- guidance of which locations within the MD to host the four public consultation sessions this year. We do however recommend that the sessions be held in Hardmore, Cherry Grove, Lakori and Glendon. Uh, and the dates are listed. November 27th, we were open to host two, um, just to give us, um, to allow us to have one in the morning and one in the afternoon during the day. So the locations that administration has selected for those are Hardmore and Cherry Grove just cause of the proximity. And then we've selected November 29th for one to be held in Lakori and another one on November 30th in Glendon. This is when we take the budget to the road to our residents to see what's in it. They also get a chance to, um, ask council sec- um, questions. We have, um, each general manager has, um, a station in the hallway where residents can go and ask, you know, this road, this water. And we've, we've engaged, we've had really good public engagement during this process. Um, and we do provide feedback. Um, residents are allowed to ask questions or to write down their questions if they don't wanna say it in person. And then administration would look over it and see whether it's something to be put into the budget. A lot of the times we do find that some of those concerns are already brought forward, um, to be included in the, in the, in the budget. I also want to say this year that scheduling these is subject to, um, health restrictions. Um, so if anything changes, um, any, any direction from the, from Dr. Henshaw, sorry, I forgot my position, um, what could affect, um, whether or not we can actually hold these publicly.
Okay. So we need a motion to... Yes. Got a question? Yeah, go ahead.
Uh, so didn't we hold one last time in, in Cherry Grove, like last year? And we were gonna rotate them, right? So we were gonna rotate from, so every corner of municipality would get their chance to do that. Uh...
Through the reef to Counsel Faddeev, yes, that was the discussion, um, previously, but under the direction of our new CEO, he felt that it was necessary to go to where we have the, where the residents are majorly located. Uh, I did tell him that last year we did go to Flat Lake and we had one person attend who was also another resident from that area. So trying to get to where we have a lot of our residents located, still making sure that we're spread enough that residents from different angle can, can, can at least be able to attend, um, one is what our, our goal is. And also I must note that we also have a public question period that is scheduled for a council meeting in November, which is also another chance for our residents all across the MD, um, to engage with budget.
For sure. That makes, that makes total sense. Uh, Counsel Skaarsens and, and my ward are heavily populated and, but I don't, I don't see anything that is close to, uh, Moose Lake or, or Bonneville. Uh, and I, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not saying we shouldn't go to Cherry Grove, but I, I thought that's the pattern we were gonna go. So we're, we're, we are disengaging 2,600 people over in the Moose Lake area and we have engaged somebody over there. So that's just my question there.
Through the reef, if council would like, we could, none of these are scheduled yet until we get approval through council. So if council would like, we could change one of this location if this is what council would prefer.
Yes.
Yeah. I mean, the last two I went to were in Cherry Grove and McCory, right? And then Glendon. So, yeah, I don't think I've ever seen one.
In the show house?
Yeah. Since I've been here.
We haven't had one in the show house because we scheduled one for the fish and wildlife last year. And due to public health restrictions, we had to have it virtually in council chambers.
Yeah, John?
Yeah. I was just gonna say that if it was held in Fort Cantor in Bonneville, it would be closer for a lot of people in Ward 1 and Ward 2, as opposed to in Ardmore.
Okay.
Mr. Reeve, uh, I think, Mr. Reeve, members of council, there is also on the November 12th council meeting, there is, uh, one hour set aside in that council meeting for, uh, for public participation on the budget as well. So if that, if that helped alleviate the, you know, uh, the, the Ward 2, uh, you know, the, um, i- issue here locally, it was, uh, it was my position and, uh, that, uh, Ardmore is, uh, is, uh, our second largest hamlet following Cherry Grove. And it was, uh, it was my position that our, our consultation should try to go where we can hit as many people as possible. I think there is some validity in going out, but as, uh, as staff had indicated to me, the Flat Lake last year, for example, where we went out to the country, that one person showed up. It, it, it wasn't, uh, it, it, I don't think we got good value for the time we spent trying to put that on. So we targeted this year Ardmore, Cherry Grove, Lakori and the Glendon area. We're trying to get most people and we've opened up, uh, one hour, um, here. Um, we could extend that on November 12th, uh, to two hours if we wanted and actually have an open house, recess, uh, the council meeting for, uh, for that period, have an open house and then go and finish off the council meeting. We could do that right here, which would cover off that as well if you would like.
Well, I think what he's saying that Cherry Grove just got done. So that's, you know, let's switch it up is what he's, I think you're trying to say.
Yeah. I, I just wanna be, you know, I, cause the whole, you know, the whole idea was that everybody's gonna get a turn, uh, to do that. I'm okay with this. This makes sense. And, uh, but whatever administration wants, but it just, yeah, it was just a question I had.
We'll have to see, uh, what the health regulations. Thanks. Need a motion for this? Yes?
I would, if council is okay with the dates, the times and the location, um, administration's recommendation is that council approves, um, the locations and the dates and the timing as, as displayed on the screen.
Thank you.
Yeah. I'll, I'll make that motion to approve and based on that we have people coming to council here as well from, that are closer to Bonneville. So.
Okay. Thank you, uh, Counsel Crick, for that motion. Any discussion on that motion?
Well, just that the, the come to council won't see all the nice fancy billboards and, and charts and posters that we have, but.
We could do that.
We could have them in the hallway and in here, couldn't we? Yeah. All right. Any other discussion on this motion? Seeing none. All those in favor? Carrie, thank you.
Thank you.
Can we take a five-minute recess or are you guys shut down for dinner? Are you gonna go right through? Five-minute recess, please. Yeah.
We don't actually have that right.
Yeah.
We don't actually have.
Thank you, Mr. Reeve, members of council. I'll turn the podium over to Brian Bispalko, the General Manager of Infrastructure Services.
Morning, Mr. Reeve, or good afternoon now, Mr. Reeve, members of council. I'm in front of you today with a, an update on the Ardmore and Fort Kent fire halls. Due to a lack of work being performed at the fire halls in Ardmore and Fort Kent, prime contractor RPC Group, Inc., was issued a notice of default letter by the MD on September 7th, 2021, and a follow-up letter on September 17th, 2021, outlining deficiencies and requesting a schedule for completion of work within five days. There was no response from RPC regarding the schedule, so a termination of the right of work letter was sent September 29th, 2021. This letter had RPC removed from performing the remaining items of the contract and had the MD taking immediate steps to complete the work. The MD contracted Green Contracting Services to complete the parking lot portions of the contract at both sites. Green mobilized forces on October 12th, 2021, and started preparing both sites. Cement stabilization of the soil was done at both sites, and compaction tests were performed by a geotechnical consulting firm. Two lifts of asphalt were completed in Fort Kent. Sorry, this date is wrong, the second lift, they changed their schedule. The second lift is being completed today in Fort Kent, and Ardmore was completed yesterday. Line painting is scheduled to commence after asphalt is completed, however, this will all be weather-dependent. Minor deficiencies in the interior are to be completed by either MD forces or local contractors as required. With paving expected to be complete by October 25th, this, again, this data's changed to, they'll be completed today. The interior deficiency is expected to be completed by November 1st. The only remaining work would be seasonal deficiencies such as landscaping and seating. This would be completed in the spring of 2022, unless fall weather conditions allow for this to be completed this year. The fire hall should be ready for intended use by the BRFA on December 1st, 2021. So administration recommends that council accepts the Ardmore and Fort Kent fire halls update as information. I'll answer questions if there are any.
Any questions, gentlemen? I'll start with that one.
Okay.
All right, we need a motion now for update as information. Thank you, Counselor Crick, for making that motion. Any discussion on this motion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Very, thank you.
Mr. Reeve, members of council, we have received a letter from the Bonneville Junior A Pontiacs requesting a partnership with the MD of Bonneville in the form of a rink board sponsorship for the 2021-2022 season. The season is of special significance for the Pontiacs, they are celebrating their 30th anniversary as a member of the Alberta Junior Hockey League and a contributing member of the Bonneville and area community. Some of the benefits of partnering with Pontiacs are summarized in the request letter attached as Appendix A. The sponsorship request is for $4,500 for the 2021-22 season, which includes one rink board advertising, one 30th anniversary framed limited edition jersey, and one pair of season tickets. All previous hockey funding or sponsorship requests brought to council between 2017 and 2020 are attached in Appendix B for council information. The cost and source funding, $4,500 funded from the 2021 operating budget, from council contributions to non-government and NGOs, and the administrative recommended action is the council approves the request from the Bonniac, from the Bonneville Junior A Pontiacs for a rink board sponsorship for the 21-22 season, the amount of $4,500 to be funded from the 2021 operating budget.
Thank you. I'll make a motion to accept this recommendation for the sponsorship.
Mr. Reeve, could I just ask you all to start using your mics?
Your mic, done. Your mic.
Oh, sorry. I make a motion to accept this recommendation for Junior A Pontiacs.
Number one.
Sponsorship. Thank you.
Number one?
Number one, yeah.
All right, any discussion, gentlemen? What happens to the season tickets? Do we give them to staff, or what happens to that?
Through the reef to council, I would suggest that we probably raffle them off internally, that, you know, probably several days before each game, there could be an internal raffle that staff could have the opportunity to go. There are some other probably issues surrounding the season tickets with the restriction exemption program that's currently in place and being, and being regulated by the Pontiacs, but aside from that, we could certainly make sure that staff has a crack at the tickets, absolutely.
And the jersey, we donate it somewhere, or what?
Jersey could either be donated or hung in the lobby.
Okay. Any other discussion? Yes?
I picked a lobby.
All right.
I just wanted to, sorry.
Yeah, go ahead.
Appendix B is, you know, when I first read it there, I was, none of those are actually Pontiac support, so this is actually our first time supporting the Pontiacs, which is good. I definitely support it, for sure.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Carson, and all council. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Carrie, thank you, gentlemen.
So the next on the list is the 2021 Remembrance Day ceremonies. Every year, MD council endeavors to participate in the various Remembrance Day ceremony and events held throughout the region. Administration has prepared the following list of the 2021 Remembrance Day celebrations. Number one, the Royal Canadian Legion Branch 211, Cold Lake, November 11th, 2021. But due to COVID restrictions, there will not be a community service for Remembrance Day, however, there will be a short service at the Senataf on 10th St. in Cold Lake North. The Cold Lake Legion invites a member of council to join them to help pay tribute to their veterans. We don't know the timing quite yet, but we'll, we'll find out soon. Number two, the Royal Canadian Legion Branch 183 in Bonneville, November 11th, 2021, at 10:45 a.m. The Bonneville Legion invites a member of council to their outdoor ceremony at 10:45 a.m. at, at the Legion Hall at 5112-52AV in Bonneville. Ecole Notre Dame High School, November 10th, 2021, at 10:10 a.m. On behalf of Ecole Notre Dame High School Vice Principal Jeff Say invites the Reeve to the Remembrance Day services at St. Louis Church on November 10th at 10:10 a.m. Mr. Say requests a short speech, be prepared to address the students. Number four, request for prerecorded address through a video for virtual Remembrance Day ceremony to the Cold Lake Middle School, Ecole Dr. Bressot, and St. Dominic Elementary School. Attached as Appendix A is the full listing of ceremonies scheduled throughout the MD of Bonneville with additional details. A formal invitation request from the Royal Canadian Legion Cold Lake Branch is attached as Appendix B, and a formal invitation request from Ecole Notre Dame High School is attached as Appendix C. Administration recommended actions, the council approves the Reeve under counselors to attend the 2021 Remembrance Day ceremony as follows, and I'll leave it to council to determine which counselors are going to fill those three blanks. And the council approves the request from Cold Lake Middle School, Ecole Dr. Bressot School, and St. Dominic Elementary School to provide a recorded video message from the MD of Bonneville Reeve to be incorporated into their Remembrance Day ceremonies.
Mr. Reeve?
Yes.
I just see Glendon School is not on the list, it usually was. Not sure what happened there.
You must see it.
A request was not received from Glendon this year.
Okay, well, I'm probably going to take number three, and I probably have to do something virtual for, or does somebody else want to? Is that my?
I think it's a great opportunity for you today.
Yeah, so number, I'll do the, I guess it'd be number four, or no number, the bottom one?
Well, it's not really attendance, right? So it's not really needed as a motion.
So Deputy Reeve, the second one would just be a separate motion approving us to do the video and distribute it to the, to those locations.
Okay. All right, go ahead.
I'll do, I'll do number two, if that's here there one.
Okay.
Yeah, usually it's the Reeve and a deputy that will show up to the legions and other, and other one. The Reeve should always be at one, and a deputy should always be at the other. And usually it's been just rotating, so one year you'll do Cold Lake, next year you'll do Bonneville, and deputy will, will alter that.
What's the times, though, on the?
You can make both. It's 10:10 and 10:45. I've always been at the CT1 as well.
Yeah, it's, usually it's fairly tough, depending on what it is sometimes, but the alternate always seems to work, and respectful to both, both places.
So we need the Deputy Reeve in Cold Lake, is what you're saying? And I should be attending in Bonneville at the Notre Dame and the Royal Canadian, yeah.
Mr. Reeve, if I may interrupt, just for clarity, the ceremony at the high school is actually on the 10th, because they will be closed on the 11th.
Okay.
If that's part of your concern.
Oh, so I can do them both, no problem. Should read my package a little more closely, right? Yeah. Thank you. It's usually at the schools, the deputy, yeah, okay. Thank you.
Sorry, just for clarification for the motion, then, so it'll be Reeve Klinsky attending the number one and number three? Is that correct?
Nope.
No?
Well, it doesn't matter, no, because the dates are different, so I can do one or two, whatever, whatever, you know, I can go to one, and I can go, I go to one or two, and then I'll do three for sure, but it doesn't matter, whatever, whatever the Deputy Reeve wants, one or two, that's fine with me. So Dana's not here at the moment, so, Mike?
He would go probably to Cold Lake.
He'll go to Cold Lake, so I'll take Bonneville and Ecole Notre Dame.
And then you can do the Ecole Notre Dame as well.
And then we have to do some kind of a virtual thing here, right?
Yeah, it was done here. Mr. Hogan can assist you with that.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Reeve, members of council. We'll have our communications department work with the Reeve to create, to create whatever text for a speech, and obviously to produce the video itself.
Thank you. And we can do that all in one motion, correct? Or you need three?
So we have the one motion approving the attendance to these three ceremonies, and then we would just need another motion approving the video and the distribution of such.
Okay, thank you. All right, we need a motion.
Yeah, I'll make a motion.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Carson, for making the motion. Any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Carrie, we need one more. It'll be up there right away. Okay, thank you, Counselor Crick, for making that motion. Any discussion on Counselor Crick's motion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Carrie, thank you, gentlemen.
I just remind council that just because those are the names that are on the motion is not limited to who can attend those as well, right? So.
Good point.
Thank you, Mr. Reeve, members of council. The government of Alberta has deemed November as Family Violence Prevention Month. This declaration is especially significant to the Dr. Margaret Savage Crisis Center as an emergency shelter for women and children fleeing domestic and intimate partner violence. The Dr. Margaret Savage Crisis Center has submitted a proclamation request to the MD of Bonneville to declare November 2021 as Family Violence Prevention Month within the municipality. Similar proclamation requests have been submitted to the Town of Bonneville and the City of Cold Lake. The goal is that this increased awareness will help highlight the issues of domestic violence in our communities. Council approved a similar request from the Dr. Margaret Savage Crisis Center in 2020 and proclaimed November 2020 as Violence Prevention Month. Attached for council review is Appendix A, the request letter, and Appendix B is the draft proclamation. Our administrative recommendation is that council approves the proclamation of the November 2021 as Family Violence Prevention Month within the municipal district of Bonneville, and you can see the council options, and we're recommending option one.
I'll make that motion.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Crick, for making that motion. Do we have to read this out, or no? Yeah. I better find it. What page is that on, man? 115?
You want to?
Just, does it go any lower, or? Whereas Alberta has the third highest rate of self-reported partner violence amongst Canadian provinces, and whereas the community benefits in creating awareness and resourcing on family violence, and whereas violence against women and children represent one of the most significant social, sorry?
Society.
Society issues that endanger Canadians' health and well-being, whereas the effect of family violence may be carried on from generation to generation, and whereas there are many people in the municipal district of Bonneville number 87 who experience family violence, and whereas the impacts of COVID-19 has ex...
Exacerbated.
Sorry.
Exacerbated.
Exacerbated cases of domestic, domestic violence recognized worldwide as the shadow pandemic, and whereas all residents in the municipal district Bonneville have a role to play in preventing family violence. Now, therefore, I, Barry Klinsky, Reeve of the Municipal District of Bonneville, to hereby proclaim the month of November 2021 to be Family Violence Prevention Month. In the municipal, in municipal, in the municipal district of Bonneville, I call upon citizens to speak out against family violence. I call upon you to make a difference by creating a culture of support for those affected by family violence, and I call upon you to encourage all residents of the municipal district of Bonneville to help make our municipality violence-free in 2021 and beyond. You can speak up for those who are silent. Thank you. Need a motion?
Yeah.
Motion's made already? All right, any discussion? No, all those in favor?
So thank you, Mr. Reeve, members of council. 7.4.4 was the change venue of the 2021 Strategic Planning Session. The 2021 Strategic Planning Sessions were arranged and scheduled with the previous council to take place on November 15 to 18, 2021, in Edmonton at the Hilton Doubletree Hotel. The recent 2021 municipal auction has resulted in some new members of council and some questions regarding the timing as well as the location for these strategic planning sessions. Administration's proposing to mitigate the concerns around the timing of the strategic planning session taking place the week before the rural municipalities of Alberta Fall Convention to move the location for the planning sessions to Bonneville. When there are new members of council following a municipal election, there can be a significant benefit to getting away for a few days for team building and the ability to immerse themselves in the creation of a municipal strategic plan with minimal interruptions. However, this process is time-consuming and costly. Strategic planning for a new council is a cornerstone for success, it creates the roadmap for council direction and administration's implementation within the municipality. The strategic, strategic planning sessions can be accomplished in a home environment, providing the counselors and Reeve can commit to dedicating their full attention, free from distractions, to the facilitated discussion for the full duration of the sessions. A considerable benefit to staying home for the strategic planning sessions is the reduced cost. The timing of the planned strategic planning session falls on the week before the RMA Fall Convention, was also stated. The timing of the planned strategic planning session falls on the week before the RMA Fall Convention was also stated as a concern. Multiple counselors indicated that two weeks back-to-back would be problematic and that many would not be able to attend both the strategic planning session and the Fall Convention. By relocating the strategic planning sessions to Bonneville, administration is hoping to alleviate the concern of counselors being able to attend both the strategic planning sessions as well as the Fall Convention. Council also has the option of canceling the strategic planning session entirely and postponing to a later date. However, this would result in the M.D. incurring a much higher cost as there would be facilitator charges, airline travel cancellations, et cetera, et cetera, that the M.D. would be required to compensate. To relocate the 2021 strategic planning sessions from Edmonton to Bonneville would be cancellation of the Edmonton venue for 1,500 and booking costs in Bonneville for 1,000. There are also substantial cost savings associated with relocating the sessions to Bonneville. Hotel savings of approximately $9,600, travel approximately $2,310, meal expenses approximately $2,400, minus the $2,500 in relocation costs for an estimated net savings to the M.D. of $11,810. Administrative recommended, recommended action is that council directs administration to change the location for the 2021 strategic planning sessions to a suitable venue in Bonneville from November 15 to the 18th, 2021, and furthermore, the council directs administration to make all necessary arrangements for those sessions.
Thank you, Al.
Yeah, I'll go ahead and make that motion, and I know we talked about the one venue. I think the CT has a great spot as well in the lecture hall that would accommodate, so, you know, something to definitely consider. So I'll make the motion to approve though, seeing a model.
Okay, thank you, Councilor Skarson for making that motion. Any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Carrie, thank you, gentlemen.
And the next on the list is correspondence information. I'm not going to go through each piece of correspondence in its entirety, but in front of you, you do have the minutes of the BRFA Board Meeting of August of 2021, letter from the Town of Sundry to the Premier, letter from the Town of Sundry to the Minister of Municipal Fairs, letter from the Bonneville Oil Lady Society, letters from County of Vermillion River to the Minister of Health, email from the Bonneville Municipal Library, email from the Bonneville District Chamber of Commerce, an email from Go East Edmonton, and we, I'll, I will return to that in a second, email from Lakeland Industry and Community Association, invitation to an online workshop, report from the City of Cold Lake, report from Natural Resources Conservation Board, NRCB, report from the Lakeland Center for Fetal Alcohol Spectrum Disorder, bulletin from the Bonneville Municipal Library, their annual report for 2020, the M.D. donations promotional items update, and the council action update. The Go East, we received an email from them after the package was completed, and Go East of Edmonton Regional Tourism Organization has asked for us to appoint a representative from our M.D. to their, to their association. We'd like to have someone from council that we keep up to date on the important week we're doing and, and be invited to attend their seasonal or yearly events online or in person. They've asked us for the names and email addresses, et cetera, et cetera, so I'd leave it to council to determine if there was somebody that they wanted to appoint to be the representative on that association.
Thank you, Al.
I, I would like to throw my name in for sure with that. I mean, as far as being the previous chair to the regional economic development committee, I think it kind of goes hand in hand with the tourism aspect of that for sure, so.
Thank you, Darcy. Anybody want to make a motion to appoint Darcy? Sure. Any discussion? Yes.
So are these going to be organizational meetings that they're going to have? Or are they looking at more of doing a conference type of atmosphere?
Our information at this early date is they're looking for someone to be their liaison with the M.D. It's not a board position, and I don't know, we have no idea what their schedule will be, but they're looking for a liaison position on what that eventually evolves into being. I'm not sure today. The email that you see in your package is, is literally all we have. My understanding is they're looking for a liaison on council right now, and that will probably evolve to something else in time.
Yeah, looking forward to it. I think it's something important for all of council to get involved if it is a, some sort of kickoff to something, again, by liaisons. Yeah, we're good there. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion?
Mr. Reeve, if I may, for clarity, do we want to put a term on this appointment, one year? Should we start with a one-year term, or what would you like to do for that?
How long do you want us to?
We were in the process of getting more clarity on, on their expectation for that. We haven't received it yet.
Yes, Councilor.
Sorry, I've been told that they, they have said that one, one year would be acceptable at this time.
Okay, Councilor.
Yeah, I think usually with any kind of committee, in order to really grasp it and move the ball forward, you need at least two years to really make any kind of impact. And I think if it's just liaison position and if Councilor Skarson still maintains his duties as a economic development officer, I think it's, it's important for us to, to, to keep that, two years.
So we'll put it at a two-year, please?
Two years?
Two-year? If that's all right, if everybody, yes?
That would be my amended motion, is two years. Thank you, yeah. That's what you said, right? Two years, okay.
You're okay with that, Councilor Skarson? Yes, okay. All right, we had a little amendment there, but same motion, I guess. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Carrie, thank you, gentlemen.
Mr. Reeve, members of council, that completes our, our staff reports. It's, the next on the agenda, I guess, would be counselor reports, et cetera.
Yeah, council reports. This council has nothing to report.
Okay, Councilor.
We just heard it, yeah, it was kind of tough, so.
I'll just say thank you to the previous counselor here, to Mark Humble, for his four years of service, and I look forward to serving this community for the next four years.
Thank you. Mike?
Sorry, Mr. Reeve, I'm going to interrupt one more time. Can we just have a motion to accept all of that correspondence's information as well?
I apologize. All right, yeah. Councilor Crick makes that motion? Sorry, my fault again. Any discussion on that? Seeing none, all those in favor? Carrie, Donnie, opposed? Okay. All right, we're all in favor. All right, yeah, Mike, council report.
Thank you, Reeve Kalinsky. I have nothing to report, and congratulations on being Reeve and did a good job today, so it's good. Thank you.
You're welcome.
I just want to say thank you to everyone, and thank you, Reeve Kalinsky, and working with all of yous here, and hope we do all the best in the next four years.
Yeah, as well. I guess I didn't have any meetings last month here, so, yeah, and again, looking forward to the next four years for sure, so, thank you.
Yeah, I'm looking forward to working with everybody as well, and I worked a little bit with, a little bit of community, community, I worked with Al a little bit on a few discussions, but not, not a lot. And I'm looking forward to working with everybody. I need to get a little bit of a, I haven't spoken for a long time, so you can tell. So I'm a little nervous still, but appreciate your, we can make these meetings go a little more smoother. I was kind of holding up to meeting a few times, but thank you, everybody, all staff and everybody. Thanks. Where's our next, Al? That's in camera, all right. Thank you.
I'll make the motion to go on closed session.
Thank you, Councilor Fedev.
I just wanted to thank Mr. Hogan and all the staff for all their hard work as well. Thank you, guys, very much.